Okay, good evening, everybody. Thanks for uh thanks for being here. Um it's um Thursday, July the eleventh, twenty twenty four. It's actually seven oh one. Uh the Zono Board of Appeals meeting of the town of Concord. Uh we are starting off with a special permit. Uh but special permits request from Li Jian Ti Lin. For special permit on the zoning by law sections four two 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 and eleven six for a one thousand square foot additional dwelling unit on the second floor of an existing detached garage. And in addition to that, a waiver to the rear yard setback uh to twenty nine point seventeen feet instead of the required thirty feet. And this is at forty one Nishoba Road. Who's here to speak and uh for the applicant?
Um I'm I'm there, I'm name, uh Jason like R. So so there and I'm here to present myself.
Good, um what's uh what's your application? What do you want to present tonight?
Um the 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 whole thing and the opposed the uh thousand square feet uh per permits and the the slightly short of the setback on the back. My yard, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we've uh we've, I think we all read the application. I actually also visited the site yesterday, walked the street. Um and um indeed, it is a permit uh in an existing structure on the second floor uh above an existing, in an existing garage. Um and the permit is to increase the uh unit from seven hundred and fifty square foot, which is allowed by right to one thousand square foot, right? And then I think you had, uh once you, at the time that you built, uh constructed the garage, the garage overhang um is eight inches into the rear setback, right? And the rear setback is uh
eighty feet.
Uh and I'm uh and MBTA easement.
Yeah.
But um Miss Yulis, you have a question?
Um if you would like, I can bring up um any of the plans or documents that are on the website.
Uh sure, if you can uh bring up, it says, I think, existing site plan, but uh I think that will be good, but um. So that's a, are there any questions from uh from members of the board on this petition?
No.
Not seeing any, right? Um let me open it up.
How do we respond to the letters?
Well, that's that's the, we'll get that, Tom, we'll get there. Uh because now I'm gonna open it up for uh public comment, as we we typically do. So is anybody uh of the public who wants to speak?
I'm sorry, but you're mumbled. I can't catch what you're saying.
Okay, so uh sorry, um I was just opening.
Yeah, so Tom, I, Tom, I, Tom, I think it's your your wifi, because you're frozen right now. Well, I don't know if you can move to a different different room with better wifi.
Yeah, that might, that might be a good one. But anyway, uh opening it up for public comment, um not see, they they are again, Tom, but you're uh you're muted now, but that's okay. That's okay, you can at least listen now. Up they are.
Yes.
Um not seeing any public comment. Uh Tom, um I'd close the uh.
So you may want to remind people they need to use the raised hand function?
If yeah, if you wanna have public, uh any public comment, then you need, should use the raised hand function here. Um seeing none. Um Tom, uh well, actually, let me close the uh the public comment section of this hearing. Um we did get a letter in this afternoon, um late this afternoon. Um I was able to read it. Um I haven't necessarily digested it, although I I got the gist of it. Uh but Tom, did you wanna comment on that, or?
Uh not on that letter, but on the two letters concerning the water division and the health board. How do we address those, if at all, or those on a separate track, that we don't have to take those into consideration in deciding this application?
Uh tho- those, those will be uh part as conditions. I mean, as as, you know, and and a little bit, uh as explained that before is like, uh, you know, you you first go for your permits, right, before you go into uh full uh in 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 site plan revisions, you know, you don't do design drawings for a septic system if you don't, you know, if you're not sure whether you can get your uh your special permit. So that that always kind of comes first. So these are pretty standard conditions uh from health and uh water and sewer.
Although I just, and and I'm not arguing, I've just note, I've just note. I would just note that under eleven point six, eleven point six point three, one of the conditions to grant the special permit is adequacy of utilities and other public uh services. So in the course, I'm not a voting member tonight, but in the course of the decision, whatever it may be, if it's allowed, you need to incorporate, you're right, the various uh concerns of those other two groups.
Yeah, right, right, right. They they are, I think, Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are standard conditions, uh pretty much.
Um so the both um Concord Public Works Water and Sewer and the Health Division review all ADU applications that come through. Um for the ADU applications for the Health Division, a person is either required to ha- um provide a Form C, which would be for onsite sewage disposal or Form S for um if they are on town sewer. And the Health Division evaluates um both. For uh this property, which is on a private septic system, the Health Division goes through the Form C, determines that the existing septic system uh is not um sufficient uh currently to handle uh of the additional bedroom counts for the ADU. Uh but that adequate onsite sewage disposal can be provided um with an upgrade to the septic system, which they have um in their follow-up letter. Um which it was brought to my attention late this afternoon that their letter, which was not received till um by revised letter was not received till Tuesday, um doesn't have a date. But um that's the standard that they have provided, their standard conditions, that prior to the issuance of a building permit um for the ADU, the property owner has to go through the process to have a upgraded septic system um application submitted, reviewed, approved, and then that system uh gets part of, becomes part of that building permit process, that it gets upgraded um before uh occupancy is provided, um is um provided by the building department. Um for waters in sewer, it's a similar situation. They review the existing water uh infrastructure and um provide conditions that um that system with these conditions is adequate to serve that ADU. So it's um similar to much larger projects where the board reviews them, issues and concerns are addressed through conditions of approval.
Tom, that answers your question?
Yes, it does. That's fine.
Cool, um. Members of the board, any discussion? I think it's it's kind of a straightforward uh situation where whereas in the the the.
Oh, we can do.
Um. Where the um uh the the setback uh special permit, setback waiver is is a budding MBTA uh property, so I I think that's that's a very defensible uh permit. And then the um um since it's an existing structure already and going um granting special permit for the addition two hundred and fifty square foot um is also uh not detrimental to the neighborhood, so in my opinion, so.
Mm-hmm, agree.
Um is, does anybody wanna make a motion, or do you wanna talk about it any further?
Um I feel like they're also pretty straightforward, and there's, I I can't think of what part of it would need discussion.
Yeah, okay, Ravi?
Yeah, I'm uh on the same page.
Elizabeth, be my guest.
Okay, um I would like to make a motion for a special permit under zoning by law four point two point two point two and eleven point six for a thousand square foot additional dwelling unit on the second floor of existing detached garage and waiver to the rear yard setback to twenty nine point one seven feet instead of required thirty feet at forty one Nishoba Road.
Um and I can add, based on um the previous conversation, uh based on the conditions recommended by Water and Sewer and the Health Division, um and then incorporate um Theo's comments about the setback waivers um not being detrimental.
Period is over, so we can't do it anymore.
I'm sorry, and um base, and the additional information, um Theo's comments about the setback waivers uh and the two hundred and fifty square feet and um not being detrimental.
Agreed.
Perfect, thank you.
Um all those, all those in favor, um Miss Sophia?
Hi.
Uh Ms. Dwyer Leonard?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Um congratulations.
Great.
From this granted. Um seven oh five, yep, um middle sex school for special permit and site plan review on the uh zoning by law section six to eleven, eleven six and eleven eight for a new athletics practice field with a height waiver to seventy two feet nine inches at fourteen hundred Lowell Road. Um the applicant has uh requested a uh continuance to our August eighth meeting. Um and what's the time slot we have, Elizabeth, on that the date for them?
Um. I, hang on, what, let me um let me take a look. I know Heather was working. Kim's on vacation this weekend, so um Heather and I are doing our best, best we can. Give me two seconds. Um. August eighth. Um. Seven ten, please.
Uh seven ten, um. Do I have a motion uh to continue this to this item?
Sure.
To August eighth, seven ten?
Great. I move to continue the middle sex school um request for special permit and site plan review under zoning by law six point two point eleven, eleven point six and eleven point eight for a new athletics practice facility with a height waiver of seventy two feet nine inches at fourteen hundred Lowell Road to August eighth at seven ten P M.
Um all those in favor, Ms. Dwyer Leonard?
Aye.
Miss Sophia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Um seven ten, CP uh Elm Street LLC for sign variance on the sign by law sections three C, two and eight B to allow the removal of an existing forty seven and a half square foot sign on an existing pylon and to allow a new forty two s- square foot sign where twenty five square foot is permitted at seven sixty eight Elm Street. Anybody here to speak uh for the applicant? Um. Um Elizabeth, you're uh.
Yes, can you, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to uh, I'm on my phone and I'm trying to get my photo to, or image to show, I apologize. But I am here. So sorry, Carrie McCormick with Crosspoint Associates, representing seven sixty eight Elm Street.
Okay, um Elizabeth, do we have anything uh to uh to look at? Or you're muted, you're muted.
Yes, give me two seconds, and I will bring this up for um for Carrie. Uh so this is the existing freestanding sign, the existing paparazzi sign, um and uh the applicant is proposing uh a new freestanding sign that is actually smaller than the existing sign, given the type of base and the size of it. Um and one slot for each of the four tenants. And then
Okay.
Um at the bottom is um the property owner um for the property.
Good, good. Miss, Miss McCormick, anything to uh, anything to add to this? Like, why, why should we give this uh this variance, for instance?
Certainly, yeah, thank you for your time. Um so we're proposing the redevelopment of the former paparazzi at seven sixty eight Elm Street, received our planning board approval back in January. Um the the building will be demolished completely. Um we're working through the final uh few handful of uh conditions that that for the special permit with the planning board and hope to start uh construction, we're hoping by the end of July. Um what we're going to build there is gonna be a new building, fifteen thousand square feet. There's gonna be four tenants there. Um uh so it'll be a monthly tenanted building, not just the one tenant that's there today. Um and we're pretty much right on right off of Route two, so we're highly visible from Route two, which has a high rate of speed. So what we're looking to do is repurpose the existing pylon there. It's a pretty good structure. It's got steel columns that go up through the existing sign and repurpose and reuse the existing uh structure uh to create a new sign that's for for four tenants versus just the one tenant. So that each sign will be smaller, but will hopefully be visible um from Route two. And we think, you know, by reducing the size of each sign from the big one sign that's there down to the kind of four tenants, it kind of brings down to the scale and kind of will all fit with the kind of the architecture and scale of the the project. So we think it's, it would be very helpful for the tenants to be able to, or the people passing by to be able to see the sign and be able to make the proper maneuver at the intersection to be be able to turn and then turn into the property.
Great, thank you. Uh members of the board, any comments, questions? No, nobody. Tom, you're frozen again, I think, um and I'm, you know, since this is a variance request, I'm looking at you. Um.
Well, this is a sign variance. It's it's slightly different than a zoning variance.
It 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 is, it is, but still, still, he actually just uh promised, on there, he is back, Tom is back. Um is muted, but um any questions here? Uh now let me then open it up for uh for pub- public comment, anybody, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I muted myself as I started talking. I had just a basic question, um which is that it it doesn't seem to me that there's any um rule against that slight change in shape from the um you know, straight across and then down to just down. And I just wanna make sure I'm correct on that. I haven't sat on many sign variances before.
Well, neither have we, so.
But it's just a total square foot, not a particular shape.
Correct, correct.
Great, good.
Uh which which surprised me because it's, you know, why isn't it, why isn't this, you know, fifty feet in the air, right? Because that's I don't, I didn't think there was anything really against that in the zoning by law, but or in the design by law, but.
Yeah, I don't see anything. And and to to which end, it seems great to be repurposing the sign and um looks like it works to me, but I'm
Right.
glad to hear anything else.
Cool, um let's open it up for a public comment. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this application? Please raise your hand. Um not seeing anybody. I'll close the public comment section uh and bring it back to the board for a further discussion, motions, whatever uh the board uh feels like uh is appropriate at the moment. Ravi, I'm calling you out because you've been quiet tonight.
Yeah, I think we have some unique circumstances here where the sign is technically not on Route two, but for practical purposes basically is on Route two, so I'm comfortable with uh it's still under fifty feet that you would be allowed to have on Route two. It's smaller than the existing sign. Uh it seems to fit with the the project and the purposes there, so.
Yep, yep, yep. And I also, um I mean, as it says for the variance, you know, the if we, the Board of Appeals determines that the circumstances involved with a particular sign were not com- contemplated by the bylaw. And I think, you know, you you can make the argument that um it wasn't com- uh contemplated by the bylaw that really is a frontage road on Route two, right? Where you're really fronting on Route two, but there is, your address is not Route two. So I I I do think that that's the argument. Now, we closed the public hearing, the public comment section, but um I will, I will allow um this phone number to uh to just jump in. So please go ahead. You have your hand up.
Uh my name is Sanford Feman. I'm in a butter to the previous property, forty one Nishoba Road. We had a terrible time connecting, and I asked that you reopen the floor for public comments on that uh motion.
Uh I'm I'm sorry, there is, uh we actually voted on that already. Um.
Yes, I know, but you didn't. That's, that's correct, but you didn't acknowledge receipt of the documents we submitted, even though the clerk in your office said we could submit documents up until the beginning of the meeting. So I ask that you correct that error by acknowledging receipt of our documents and by allowing us to speak.
Um uh we received documents, um uh we noted as such. Um and we uh not directly, but I think the board in in general um determined that these documents were um not pertinent to the two special permit uh requests that were uh in front of us. So um, you know, I I actually, since since we got those documents this afternoon, I I was I was dragging my feet and so no, no, sorry, hang on, no, hang on, Elizabeth. Since we got those documents this afternoon, and I knew people wanted to speak, I was dragging my feet and I'm like, don't you guys wanna talk? Don't you guys wanna talk? Nobody spoke up at that point in time, and I I did leave plenty of room for people to speak up, say something, type something in the comment section, uh in the, in the, the comment section. And, you know, I'm sorry that that, you know, you had a bad connection, but, you know, the the board voted on that and and and, you know, I'm sorry, it's it's uh we are um we're done with that. And plus, at this point in time, I also think, I mean, we're in the middle of another application. Um and it's very unfair that that this applicant, the new, uh the other applicant here is is being interrupted by this call. Um sorry, uh Mr. McCormick, my uh my apologies. Had I known that it was pertinent to another uh application, then I would never have acknowledged this person. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Um moving on, um and I think we just uh I think we we just were pretty much ready for a motion on um on the sign variance. So, well, i- if, Elizabeth, if this is pertinent to the sign variance, then, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Uh it's for, as far as the board's um decision, um I have the information about um it, you know, visibility from Route two um and, you know, the rates of speed on Route two, but to the point of the variance um is that, although, you know, technically, this is not on Route two, um but the zoning by law did not contemplate, you know, this circumstance of this property with, um as I think it was Robbie, you know, this or they'll, a frontage road. Um but it is um, you know, completely visible from Route two. Um the project is bringing down the scale of this, of the sign with the four tenants um and is consistent with the redevelopment of the property. And the applicant is proposing to repurpose the existing um base and uh not go any higher than the existing sign.
Good, great, thank you. Ravi, Elizabeth?
Uh sure, I'm, I move that we approve the application of CP Elm Street LLC for sign variance under sign by law sections three C two and eight B um to allow uh a new forty two square foot sign at seven hundred and sixty eight Elm Street with the findings as just uh nicely summarized by Elizabeth.
Um Elizabeth, would you like to second that?
I second that.
Um all those in favor, Miss Fea?
Aye.
Ms. Dwyer Leonard?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Congratulations, Miss McCormick.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Um seven fifteen. Um Irina Maldonova for a special permit on the zoning by law sections four two 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 and eleven six for nine hundred and ninety square foot detached additional dwelling at two sixty two Virginia Road. Um so last time we met, I think we had sort of all the information that we uh that we needed. Um one thing we did not do at that point in time is close uh the public hearing. So I would, at this point in time, would like uh to take a vote to close a public hearing on this matter. So, Miss Fea? Or would you make a motion to uh, yeah?
I I move that we close the public hearing uh uh on the application of uh Irina Maldonova for a special permit um uh their by law sections four two 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 and eleven point six for uh attached ADU at two sixty two Virginia Road.
Thank you. Um do I have a second?
I second that.
Um actually, Thomas needs to second that. Thomas?
Yeah, I I I second, I second it.
Good, thank you.
Second.
Um because Thomas is the voting member on this uh this application because he uh. Um so now, um we got a draft uh decision in from uh town council. Um do.
Did we go around the motion?
Sorry, sorry. Uh no, we didn't vote on the motion. I I just, I need um all those in favor, Miss Fea?
Aye.
Uh.
Swain.
Wait, there it is. No, no, he 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 was gone. He's back. He's back here. Uh Miss Swain? Um we are voting on the motion. Um to.
Uh unfortunately, I got cut off. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is a motion that ha- that you just seconded, and uh you need to uh.
Yes, I agree, yes.
Okay, and um I voted to close the public hearing as well. Uh so public hearing is closed. So um we have a draft decision uh from our uh town council. Anybody have any comments on that? I myself thought it was pretty darn clear exactly what we talked about and um and and what was in in communicated in previous memos by town councils, so. Um but, you know, I'm not a lawyer. You all are, so you might have different uh different opinions.
I agree. I didn't have any comments to the, to the draft decision. I thought it was to the point, uh and made the right points.
Good.
I agree. I read it fairly caref- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I read it fairly carefully, and I agree with that uh as a decision. I read it fairly carefully and I agree with that uh as a decision.
Good, um. To that point.
I thought the decision was clear.
Yep, yep. So to that point, can we have a uh a motion?
Sure, I move that we deny the application of Irene Maldonova for a special permit under zoning by law sections. Four two 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 and eleven six for nine hundred ninety nine square foot detached additional dwelling at two sixty two Virginia Road. Adopting uh the draft decision uh. That is posted to the uh website.
I second that motion.
Um all those in favor, uh Ms. Sophia.
Aye.
Mrs. Swain. Mrs. Swain?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Um so um.
Yes.
Yeah, we got you, Tom.
We got you, Tom. We got you, Tom. Um so um that's uh.
Okay.
Special permit has been denied then. Um so uh one more uh item on the agenda for tonight is meeting minutes. Two sets of meeting minutes that were distributed and I reviewed them. I did not have any uh. Um I did not have any comments on them.
Yeah, I thought they looked good.
Yeah.
If so, Elizabeth, wanna make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to.
I agree.
To approve the meeting minutes from January ninth and May sixteenth.
Can you second?
Um all those in favor, Ms. Sophia.
Aye.
Ms. Dwyer Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Um that's it for official official business. I I'd like to, I I have two housekeeping issues, especially since we. Have pretty uh been a pretty good schedule here. Um. Our September meeting is scheduled for the twelfth. Um I would like to move that to the nineteenth, so one week later, if that's possible with you all. Can you please?
That works, that works for me.
That is fine with me as well.
Thank you. I I I am just coming back from a three-week road trip that day, so it's just.
That works for me.
Good.
Um. So that's, that's great. Um and then the other thing, and that's actually for uh for Ravi and Elizabeth. Is that on the middle sex school, um Paul will be recusing himself on that one. And so make sure that if that's on the agenda, if you make sh- ma- make really sure that you're there or otherwise given that. Give sufficient heads up if you can't make it for that 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 meeting.
We uh, here's a question. I I don't have a child at that school, but it's possible I will have a child apply for that school. In the next year or then again in the next two years. I have two children.
So you do not have a um a financial gain or interest in. You know, this application that you're presiding on. Um you can um contact the Ethics Commission and they. You know, you can easily just submit a form saying, you know, that that statement, but currently you do not have any financial gain into this. Application um and that you can act impartially. Um yeah, more more than more than likely, this project will probably be a financial drain, but on you, but uh shouldn't.
I don't have a, I don't have a child at this school, but I have a child who, if this project goes on. To, you know, let's say January or February or when applications are, do I have a child who may be in the process of applying?
No, this project will um, you will be making a decision, um probably a final decision at the September meeting.
Great, I love it. Nothing will be afoot then.
No, no, so I.
Good, perfect.
That's all I had. Um anybody, any board members? Elizabeth, you you had something, yeah?
So um as far as meeting dates um for the Forest Ridge Road project. Which is coming to the board on July twenty fifth. Um. Then I don't know if the board wanted to um. I, we had a um. A working session with them. I don't think the board will see them in um in August. Um may, but maybe like the the end of August, the last week, so I wanted to see if there was um like the twenty ninth. Or the twenty seventh. Might be available. Just to hold that date.
Okay.
So say say again, that which date, the twenty?
Twenty seventh, Tuesday the twenty seventh or Thursday the twenty ninth of August.
I I have a strong preference for the twenty ninth. Over the twenty seventh.
Was it August or or September?
It's 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 September.
Oh, the twen- oh, twenty fourth or the twenty sixth, that's right.
Oh, either one.
Yeah, because we were going in in September.
Yeah. Sorry, twenty fourth or twenty sixth of September.
That's fine, either one.
Those, both of those work for me.
Okay. Tom, do either one of those work?
Yes, both work for me.
Okay, all right, we'll shoot for the twenty sixth just to keep you guys consistent for Thursdays, um but if that doesn't work. Great, thank you.
Great, and the twenty fifth is in person, so next week we're in Kaiser Road.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yes, two two weeks, two weeks, not next week. That's gonna be, what's gonna happen then is a quick update, you know, we we have the variance application is scheduled, so please, please, please. Read up on that and um. Uh and then, you know, because that that that's gonna be pretty critical. And then they will also give a little bit of an update of where they stand and what's what's going on, um and I uh. Yeah, and that's, you know, the it it all depends a little bit on the variance application, where they're going. Um and so the 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 uh the update that they'll be giving us in a couple of weeks. Will be very. High level, if you if you will. I don't think they'll they'll be ready for details uh uh per se, but. Um it's it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a good update, and I think the variance is is gonna be very important that we. That we deal deal with that, and and that's also, you know, because the variance and then by the time, you know. It's get, it's get voted on and then gets an appeal period, and that's why sort of the follow-up. Because they don't wanna do any any big engineering unless they are through the appeal period, really. So then they file drawings. And by that time, we're in September, and that's why we have a September meeting. Nothing happens until uh until then. So, whatever we all know. Well, um that's it for me. Thank you all for being here. Um. I was sorry that I was just. Well, yeah, anyway, bad letter.
Thank you.
So we're done.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Bye, everybody.
Adjourned, you don't have to vote.